She doesn't hit my record. Yes, it's clear, yes. Me getting a handle on this next thing.
I call the Newport City Council meeting order for Monday, November 19, 2018, 6:30 PM. Our members of the council are present with the exception of Mr. Charbonneau, who is absent. Others include James Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of November 5, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting which was held on 5th November. As presented.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded to the minutes, discussion. Then hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. Nobody has signed up, then we will move on. The next item is the CDL Drug Testing Safety Policy. We have Jim Carian, the Lost Control Consultant from BLCT. And I'll turn it over to the city manager, here's a little background.
Yep, so for the past probably two years or so, the city has been working closely with our insurance carrier, which is held by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns passive. And we have been meeting seasonally as a group, as a safety committee. And we have all of our department heads as members and our employees who are the direct service providers join that committee. And we've been updating our safety protocols over the past several months. And we will soon be presenting a new policy for council review for employee safety. Part of that process has moved to the forefront, a CDL Drug Testing Safety Policy. You have a copy of the file. And this would be attributable to all employees who hold a CDL. It's not for your random employee who doesn't drive a CDL, it's specifically focused on commercial drivers. I have also Public Works Director Tom Bernie are here because this affects the people who work in his department. So with that, I'm gonna ask Jim and Tom if he'd like to chime in with any of the elements of this particular policy.
So, hi, Jim Carian. I'm here to support this policy. It was our legal counsel at the BLCT and our loss control supervisor who developed this policy. Did you all get the copy of the 11 elements of the DOT?
Yes.
So, this, there is a requirement in Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration rules that all employers with commercial motor vehicle operators have a policy around drug and alcohol testing. Drug and alcohol testing is mandatory for commercial motor vehicle operators. So, in the statute it outlines what has to be in a policy. So we took that information and turned it into the policy you see in front of you. Not many sections were edited, there are just some places that you really put your name, put the contact information for the designated employer representative. It's really not much that Laura had to do to this policy to bring it before you guys. So, does anybody have any questions regarding the policy? Any of the components of the policy?
When it comes to, and those talks about the alcohol of the CDL, what about marijuana? Now that the city, now the city, I have to say, the state has legalized recreational use. How does that affect CDL? Since it's still, of course, it's still illegal with the federal government.
Exactly, so commercial motor vehicle operators are regulated by the federal government. And federal government has not recognized marijuana as a legal substance. So, there have been no changes to the drug testing policy for those folks.
That wasn't the only question I had considering that's so new and kind of uncharted territory.
Yeah, until the federal government makes it legal, it'll still be prohibited.
Questions from council members on this policy?
I guess really the question for him would be if it's random, would we send them to the clinic? How do we say to an employee to go for a test?
It's done.
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
They actually come to us, because I am also a CDL holder. I couldn't be the contact person, so either Laura or Becky would be the contact person. It's random, and whenever they call up, it's usually a couple, three guys at the same time. They have a mobile van that actually shows up at our facility at a certain time, they give us an hour and you to be there.
And I also chime in as well, so Vermont League of Cities and Towns Property and Casualty Intermunicipal Fund, we hire third-party administrators, Occupational Drug Testing, Inc., they're out of Manchester, New Hampshire. They have an office in Montpelier. And we hired them to administer the drug testing program for you. We also pay for all pre-employment screenings and random tests for you as well. It's all covered within your membership. There are multitude of tests that are all covered in here. There's a pre-employment screenings, random screenings, there's return to duty, follow-up, post-accident, and reasonable suspicion tests. And so each one of those tests is outlined when that can occur, and only when it can occur. So, a post-accident test can only occur under certain circumstances outlined in the regulation. And so that guidance is in here, so in case there was ever an incident, they could just turn to this and follow that.
I would just ask for one more thing. The drivers for the fire department, do they follow under this policy if they have a CDL?
No, they are exempt as emergency responders, specifically in the federal regulation.
Anything else? Go ahead.
You said that somebody requires that we have a policy.
Yeah, Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration or the US DOT.
And so up to this point, we haven't had this policy?
We haven't had a policy of been administering random drug tests.
Yeah, so they've been following all of this, it's just now we're having it in place. And actually, we just, about three weeks ago, Federal Motor Carrier did an inspection on one of your neighbors, neighboring towns, and they wanted to inspect the policy, and this policy passed muster. So, we're proud of that, and we want you guys to be prepared if you were ever to have a positive test or have a visit from the inspectors of Federal Motor Carrier, because it can be a hefty fine.
Anything, questions from anyone? Then, excuse me, I lose my voice, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the policy as presented.
Solved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion on the policy. Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, what constitutes the need to have a CDL? Is it the dump, the city dump trucks, or, and why not all city employees who drive a city vehicle, whether it's the PD or the recreation pickup truck or whatever?
I'll let you answer when you have that a CDL.
Typically, it's the weight of the vehicle, gross vehicle weight. Vehicles, 26,001 pounds or more.
Now, are these all licensed vehicles or vehicles that need registrations or farm vehicles? What about like the backhoe with the excavator or the grader?
Yeah, they're vehicles that are driven over the road, that, so, construction site vehicles like excavators, backhoes, loaders, all of that, those kind of construction vehicles, they're not commercial motor vehicles. Only pretty much what you have is dump trucks.
But doesn't the city have an excavator, or is that considered, or is that licensed? Is that a registered vehicle, the grader?
So it doesn't have to be, it's not about being registered, it's the difference between a construction vehicle and a vehicle that can be used in commerce. And a vehicle like a dump truck that hauls loads would be one, motor vehicle.
Mr. Mayor, if the city refuses tonight, are they in violation, would the motor carriers come after the city? Or the council said, nope, we don't want it?
I believe you said they could do a random inspection, and if they don't follow the policy, it's a hefty fine. I mean, we've been following the policy, we just haven't had it in writing.
Right, we've been following the right things, you know, you've been doing everything right, it's just having that docking.
You have to have it in a docking.
I'd like to have a copy of that, is there anything that says if one of the city employees is found to have marijuana in his or her system, is that automatic termination, or is that up to, is that up to the city to decide?
There is an opportunity for rehabilitation, but we have some decisions to make, and this outlines that process. And you can have my copy.
Thank you.
They would need any notes on that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's a section on consequences of the policy.
So, do you mean an automatic termination?
Okay, anything else? All those in favor, aye. Opposed?
We already voted.
Vote it again, oh, because he asked questions afterwards, he thought we followed, oh, we didn't.
Well, that's part of the procedure, that question's after your vote.
We doubled down on that one.
But you had a go, he confused me by saying that the council voted no, and we already voted yes, he confused me. Okay, very good.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. Can I just mention Jim's coming up, Jim came up all the way from Montpelier. So that's why we put him on the agenda, so he can sit right here.
We should have a sofa.
No, this is a perfect one.
So, thank you, Jim, we'll be in touch soon.
Take care.
The next item is open gym update and events debrief, Recreation Department. And we have Jessica Booth, Direct Director, with us.
Yep, before I turn it over to Bob to debrief the Rotary, I just wanted to bring the open gym topic kind of full circle, because we did talk about that a while back, and I'm pleased to report that we have indeed opened the gym back up for public use. We began in early October, working on...
Jess, can you come down here so I make sure?
Yes.
I don't want to miss a word you said.
So, we began early October brainstorming some ideas and some steps that we could take to get implementation successful and safe for everybody. So we decided, of course, the gym got overhauled, which that in itself kind of helps contribute towards people using the space respectfully if it's a place that's nice already and they want to be there. So that certainly helped, we decided to pull some equipment in to provide for the community so that we didn't have to worry about things and then removing them. We just pulled some of the summer camp, nice rack with a little... Community use, please return it so that folks can continue to enjoy it. And that would give people the honor system approach there. We set some base rules and put some signage out there to help the users understand what the expectation was. And then we established a volunteer contract and an orientation so that folks that were coming in from the community could give us a hand with this, would know what the expectation was themselves and be able to tell the users when we're not around. So it was very strategic in the way that we're helping everyone to be accountable for using that space. And then after we got that figured out and got everything ready, we started some recruitment to the community and see who we could pull in for volunteers to help supervise this space. Three takers right off the get-go, so we came in, gave them, issued them a key, gave them showed them where everything was, and then on the second, we were off with our first open gym, three days a week, Mondays 4 to 6, Wednesdays 4 to 6, and Thursdays 3:30 to 5. So far, within the last seven times that we've had it open, we've had 76 users come through, ranging from ages 4 to 46, so we get a nice diverse group in there. And it's cool to see, when we are still in the office and when open gym is happening, it's cool to see that organically basketball games start to get played, and then other times it's just kids running around in there with jump ropes and big bouncy balls and whatever, just kind of blowing off some energy. We're seeing homeschool families, we're seeing kind of somewhat more adults that are in there to play pickup basketball, and so far, everything has been really smooth. Equipment's all getting returned, we haven't had any issues with people disrespecting the space. So, we're gonna keep going in that direction, and I just wanted to update you on that and let you know that that was happening successfully.
And I also want to add to that, that we have an opportunity to speak directly to the offenders, to the group that prevented open gym last year. And Jess got to play the good cop and I got to play the bad cop, but they got the message so far. So, that's one of the reasons why we're monitoring this, and I think having the floor redone was a really big asset and a nice attribute to the environment down there. So, we are able to monitor and control it a lot better than before, which is nice.
Yes, so if you or anyone you know might be interested in coming just for an hour a day, you know, once a week, it's really helpful to be able to open that up and know that somebody's in charge down there and keeping everybody safe, so.
I'm glad you had the volunteer step up.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the challenges certainly been reliability, so we're kind of trying to figure that out, and some folks are great and others, you know, we're still working on that, so. And we hope to find more and more people, especially to get some weekend hours, that's what we'd really like to see is some weekend time opened up, so.
Sounds like it's been working great so far.
Yes, and so now, we're ready, I will turn it over to Bob. Yeah, he's here to...
Do an exit interview.
That's right.
For the use of the park for the Rotary Duck Regatta Duck Race. This is, I think, our 13th or 14th duck race, and it's our biggest fundraiser of the year. And the city is always nice to allow us to use that airport in the park. We do it by the, where the farmer's market is, the grandstand, and we actually use the river. And these are actually all the blue ducks going down in the races, probably over 4,000 of them.
They'll be stuffed by hand.
Stuffed by hand. We also have a business duck race, which, the business ducks, it's a little big figure of contribution, and we have a duck regatta for them on a Friday night, we have appetizers and a meal and a dance, but it's to encourage more businesses to participate in it, and we also offer them a race so that they can actually win some money back. Those are the big business ducks, and that's, we were probably around 200 business ducks this year, which was amazing, the best business duck here we've had. That is one of the interact, we also get the high school interact, which is the high school version of the Rotary. And it's great to have them. That's Tim Jarvis, one of our helpers. In our business duck, we also offer them an opportunity to decorate a duck and win some money. And that's the winning decoration, there were like 30, 30 businesses that decorated, so it's a really... And you can see our big, we bought that big duck and it was in the parade this year, which was kind of nice. It did fit under all the wires. A little deflating and inflating, but it's amazing some of the work that the businesses do. That is the morning of the race, we actually have to unstuff this year's, or last year's ducks and restuff them with a new ticket. So, we all sit around there and have a lot of fun. Those are some more of the interactors. That would be Mr. Mayor, who also helps participate. They're lining up the business ducks for the race. And again, more of the Rotarians. We have about 50 club members and probably 35 that are real active, which is really nice. That's the start of the race, and what is, Dureshi's crane has this new, this thing they made for us, that they put them all in and he just loads them and dumps them in the river. There's probably about 50 or 60 people there, not, you know, not big, but it's fun.
I see somebody's hand over here, do they get to like hold the trigger and let the ducks out?
That's exactly what happened, yeah. Well, actually, he tilts it.
Okay, that's...
That's, so anyways, we do thank the city for doing it. And the one thing is that we do make money, but we give everything back to our community. We have lots of fundraisers, we do the fundraisers, but just recently, we did the War on the Children. We take four schools a year, and we take the underprivileged, the need, war clothing, for the, every year we do four schools. So this year, we just finished our fourth school. Some of the other things we do is, on the causeway, you're gonna notice that this next crane, you should have a whole bunch of service bearing trees that will be starting to bloom for the first time. So that's the start of, the kid's just gonna take a few years, but they're gonna look good. And we're gonna continue to hopefully every year add to those trees for the city. We also, this last year, we committed $8,000 to the Junior High to make her space for kids to have something to do in their village. Anyways, all in all, we use the land, but it's used for a good cause.
You guys, of course, will be back next year.
Yes.
And how many years have you guys been?
I think it's 13, 14. I think it's 2006 was the first one, and it started out very small, but it's gotten to be increasingly bigger as we get a little more creative as to how to raise the money.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions? Sure.
Mr. Mayor, what four schools did you help this year put more of the kids?
I figured you would know.
I don't know, that's Elliot Spates, we have to ask her. I don't help right off the top of the head, and actually, you know what? We'd like to keep it anonymous anyways, so, it's for the safety of everybody.
Some of the other funds go to help people in need. One year, there was a retired couple, seniors, who were having problems with heating oils, so we paid for heating oil, we paid for food cards for them.
Recently, we've done some services, some veterans, elderly with rants that they needed and stuff, or help assist them buy, they've got the new aluminum rants and stuff, so we helped assist them buy those rants and stuff. Yeah, we do help on the formal Christmas party, and we certainly love it, so that's a great cause also.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update.
Is it me again?
So, that's under, so that was it for the debrief?
That's it.
Okay, and the open gym? So then we're gonna move on to the Newport Rec Committee appointments. We had a memo, Jess?
Okay, so pleased to report that we had quite a few, we had a lot of interest in the committee, which I was very pleased about, and the existing committee members were also pleased about. So, we received about 15 letters of interest from the community. There were myself and three other existing committee members that kind of were rolling into this new process that we went through and checked out all the letters of interest, interviewed some folks that we didn't know, and had them come in and pay us a visit. Before we, you know, started sifting through the letters, we were kind of pinpointing our focus on some criteria that you can see that we had listed here. Folks that actually showed that they were demonstrated already personally, involved in recreational activities and community stuff that was going on in Newport. People that would contribute to a diverse committee with representation from a variety of walks of life. We wanted to make sure that it was a well-rounded committee, as Newport is, to really represent the demographics that we have here. And that, you know, we kind of looked at folks that could really bring experience and skills that will help the committee achieve projects and get things done. And then the last one, we wanted to strengthen the community engagement by bringing in new voices. So a lot of the needs that we had thrown into the hat were folks that were already strong players in other community organizations. So we kind of made the intentional goal of pulling new voices to the table so that we can bring even more people into the picture and contribute to that, pulling Newport in that right direction. And so after quite a bit of consideration and discussion amongst the four of us, we pulled the following members. Of course, Jen Smith, Maren, and Maggie were existing community members, or existing community members. And the new members would be Jamie Comtoy, Mike Nolan, Debbie Smith, and Adam Thurston for the two-year-plus term, because of course they have to be staggered terms. And then two Derby residents, Nicole Rotten and Sherry Lee Ryan. Sherry and Debbie Smith are actually both here in the audience. Sherry calls Nicole, and Nicole's over there too. So, you can make it out tonight. So that, those were the recommendations that we kind of came forth, and we think that this committee would be, would make Newport proud and certainly help us with the projects that we kind of have coming down the road. They all have their own strengths and stuff to bring to the table, so.
Questions from council members regarding the recommendations? Everybody, then, at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the recommendations.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Made and seconded, discussion.
I just like to say you did a very good job. I think this is incredible, that you've got this number of people to be interested.
I can't wait.
And that you took the time to vet all this stuff, so thank you for that.
Well, thanks, it's gonna be a nice addition, I can't wait to get these guys rolling, and it's gonna be cool, so.
Put them to work.
Yeah, put them to work, so our first meeting, if anyone's interested in coming, our first meeting, of course, was open to the public and encouraged for folks to come and, you know, get us off the ground. It's scheduled for Thursday, December 6th, we'll be in this room. And ordinarily, our meetings are one hour, but in order to get these guys rented, we decided to make the first meeting two hours of 6 to 8 PM, so.
No, I'm pleased with the recommendation, it looks like a well-rounded, that looks like a great committee. Anything else, then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you for all your effort. You're early on tonight.
I am.
The next item...
I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna take up all the airtime.
The next item is the dock committee update.
Yes, so this also was a pretty successful process. With the help of folks from the commission and the city, and the yacht club, and just the voting community down dock, we did achieve the goal of revamping the voter agreements to everybody's satisfaction for 2019. So you can see some of the things we accomplished, separating the agreement into two separate documents, which we think improved readability and understanding for our voters. Simplified the registration process a little bit by changing documentation requirements. Investigated some fire safety topics, which consumed quite a bit of the conversation, but we made some adjustments there. Cross-checked the ordinances to make sure that they, everything matched up with the agreement and what we were asking of our voters and what was required of us. And then finally addressing some concerns regarding the slip arrangements and alterations and guests, which were other pretty heavy topics that needed to be addressed, so. So what I gave you guys was the updated version that we're hoping to move forward with with our voters and get our reservations for 2019 underway, if all is well.
The committee met twice, and then the second time, we just kept right on going forward until we got it. Because we were so close, and we just went forward until we had it worked out.
With the task at hand, relatively speaking, it was a pretty quick turnaround.
Lot of clarifications is what it was needed, and... Questions from council members?
Did you make changes to the ordinance or just to the application?
Just the application. We did discuss a need to maybe pull the ordinance together eventually, after we've gone through the, a couple of years with these documents and smoothed everything out, maybe putting something together for the slips. At least there's nothing for the slips really, very little, so, but that's down the road if we decide that's necessary.
Yeah, and the mooring ordinance would go through the harbor commission where the, and they would make the changes with the committee and make recommendations, where a dock ordinance would be recommended pretty much by the rec department, is how they would do that, that's the separation of the two. That's the separation of the two. One thing we did learn is the National Fire Code prevents the cooking. There was a debate, first Jamie, the fire chief, said, oh, within so many feet, but then he got to really researching the National Fire Code. And that, that didn't allow for cooking. It's interesting.
You might also find it interesting that the Newport Marina, the other Marina there, has, one of their board members was on this committee, and they've also decided to adopt that same fire code stuff over there. So, it's good. It's good that the...
It's one of those things you don't know about, do you research it?
Yeah.
I thank the chief, fire chief, for doing the research. Even brought his big thick book tonight with him.
Yeah. Just in case a lot of questions.
Any other questions on this? Then, I would entertain a motion to accept the seasonal moring application and the seasonal slip application.
So, who?
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's made and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Nothing? No one? Then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Somebody did a lot of work this month.
Yeah. Busy. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jessica. The next item is budget presentation and scheduled special meetings to review.
So, you've got delivered your annual budget packet on, Friday's packet. This has been posted to the web. So, if you go on our website, you will find it. It's in PDF format. And what we've historically done is get you the packet, so you have time to review it. But then, we've been scheduling special meetings, so that you can have your attention focused on it alone, without, without having other items on the agenda. And that seems to have worked well for people. And so, the first question is to determine if you like that pattern, do you want to go forward with that pattern? And if you do, then I would ask that we schedule maybe our first meeting or two on a night that's not a normally scheduled, regular council meeting. So, you get to go out more. You can do it on alternate Mondays if you want to choose a different day of the week that works for you. That's, that's up to you. I just wanted to put it out there. I didn't do any memos this year. Historically, I have, and then I have to change them as we make progress. So, what you have in your packets are just the budget sheets of the operations and the capital expenses at the end. And you have a worksheet of the restricted and carryovers that you approved at the October meeting. So, those are the basis from which we are working.
I like the alternating Mondays, because I generally keep Mondays available. I don't know how the rest of the council is. Because a lot of times, other nights of the week, I have other meetings that I have to go to and I don't know how. So, we have a regular council, but then the following, we schedule a special budget meeting. I think we did that last year and it worked well.
Yeah. And what we've done, once we have the meetings, we've broken up into each department. And each meeting design is intended to have an executive session for each department head, as well as open session for the council to go over the budget. And that seemed to work well. Not everybody needed an executive session, but if one is designed in the agenda, then we've got the tool if we need it. So, I think historically, we started with the fire department, have gone into the police department, public works, and recreation. We can do administration the same night that we do the fire department. And then, of course, our last page is the other expenses, the conservation and our capital expenses. One of the things that you'll notice in this budget is we broke out all the personnel expenses. They historically were in the section entitled "Other." And we liked it. It was a double-edged sword to have it there, but it did not give a true accounting of how much each department was responsible for those personnel expenses. So, you will see that in the "Other" section, they are now showing all zeros. But those proportionate numbers have been attributed to each department, so that now there's an accurate reflection of what it costs to truly run that department. So, that's one thing that I would point out to you. I don't know what else to say until we really get our heads wrapped around that through a special meeting. But that's the most significant change that you're going to see. So, when you look at the bottom of each department and you see the percentages, there are, some of them are double digits because we moved that from that section.
Anything from council members? This Monday's going to work for everyone. And then, we'll plan on that for the first.
Do you want to start the next Monday, which is the twenty-sixth, I think? Or do you want to start the day after?
Monday, the twenty-sixth. It'll be the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Is that okay? To start then, or do you want to wait?
I don't pay to start.
We can wait till the one after, as you prefer.
You have something that night?
No, I'm thinking, isn't there something that we start for the twenty-sixth?
I don't have anything on twenty-sixth. No.
I don't have anything on mine.
No, twenty-sixth.
Must be on mine.
Yeah.
You might have something. I'll check.
It'll be at six-thirty here.
It'll be at six-thirty, and specifically for admin, we'll start with admin and fire. And that will be one as a special meeting.
So, admin and fire.
Are you serious? It's going to be?
Mon- at six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Yeah.
Davis back there. You're ready, you're ready for next Monday, right?
Sure.
Yes, we've written it down.
Yeah. So, that'll be six-thirty. Excellent. That's really all I wanted to present tonight, so you'd have a chance to sort of drink it in. Of course, if any individual members have questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
We'll have it up on the screen.
Oh, yeah, you'll have the same, the same pattern that you've become accustomed. I think that's worked well.
Yes. Okay. Anything else from council members on this? Then, we'll move on. Mr. Johnson, new business. If we're going, new business?
No, thank you.
Any new business?
Can I announce the Vorick meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
And that's a meeting on the new initiative that involves the opportunity for outdoor recreation economy. I hope I got that right, Jess. I butchered it, didn't I? Vorick.
Outdoor recreation and more economy.
Collaborative. There's a grant opportunity, and tomorrow night, from six to eight at the high school, is an opportunity for the committee to come together and learn the specifics of the grant. The municipality is the only entity that is eligible to apply. So, we're working with the downtown organization, as well as we hope outdoor recreational enthusiasts will come.
This is a pilot from the state of Vermont. They are looking for a pilot community. As the governor, this was the governor's initiative, to take advantage of the outdoor recreational economy.
The total grant award is a hundred thousand dollars, but we understand there's more than just us who are interested in applying for that. So, we'll probably have a worthwhile discussion about what the reality is in terms of the amount and how that will be used, which is, if I understand it, Jess, I'm going to look at you again, around promoting and aligning resources to, to get our community known as a recreation destination.
Yeah, it's basically to improve the opportunities and businesses, opportunities for people to become outdoor recreational users and then for businesses to support that.
So, it's exciting.
I've never had anything like this before.
Okay, any other new business?
No, you have, yeah.
Okay. We'll move on. Old business. Any old business?
No.
I don't have anything.
No experience.
Any old business? Anything new business? Okay. The next, well, we'll have a special meeting for the budget only on November twenty-sixth, six-thirty p.m. The next regular city council meeting will be Monday, December third, at six-thirty. And now, we need a motion for an executive session of labor negotiations. And... Would you like to read that motion?
Okay. I'll move to find a premature general or acknowledged subject to the executive session tonight. Recruiting place the board in or persons involved is substantial disadvantage. And secondly, I also move that we enter into executive sessions for labor negotiations.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Discussion. And all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We're going into executive session.